Welcome to the Red Hook Town Board Meeting of Tuesday, October 8, 2024. Would you be kind enough to join me in the Fledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And for the folks at home and for the audience, Eric, if you'd be kind enough to add your camera over to the big screen, we can let folks know what we'll be discussing tonight. We have a continued public hearing on a moratorium waiver and also a local law B proposed, which would be to enact a new chapter entitled sewer for folks at home. We have begun the work of establishing a sewer district right here in the township running along Route 9, the commercial district, all the way down and just south of Hanford. And so we obviously need to adopt a law that codifies how those properties shall be dealt with as it relates to maintenance and installation and so on and so forth. So that's 7:40. So we'll be discussing some revisions to that. We'll be authorizing a contract award for inspection of the water storage, sand pipe, and sediment removal for the water district's water tank. We're going to give you a brief comprehensive plan update discussion. We are going out to obtain a consultant to help us coordinate this project. You know, men, a community has what's called a comprehensive plan, which is basically like a big picture thing. And then they adopt their zoning and other laws to sort of correspond to that big picture plan. And so we received a grant to update that plan, if you will. And so we're going to get a professional to help sort of coordinate public outreach, meetings, and devising a strategy for how to update it. We receive as a requirement by law, and speaking of golf, there is a liquor license application by Red Hook Golf Club and The Grove. That's the restaurant. My daughter swears that it's terrific restaurant. And there's a 30-day notice requirement that we will entertain whether or not we're willing to waive that notice or not, so they can proceed. Obviously, this is a continuing use, just a different operator. We'll discuss with our engineer, and Brandy Nelson is with us in the flesh tonight, to discuss the options for establishing new water districts, including the one that would service the TND area. And then any other business. We anticipate tonight also going into executive session to discuss real estate matters and potentially even attorney-client. So with that being said, we have our first public hearing. That's an extension of... 307 Spring Lake Road?
Yes.
Deanna, if you'd be kind enough to read the public hearing notice.
Okay. Notice of public hearing, moratorium hardship waivers, local law one of 2024. Please take notice that a public hearing continued from Wednesday, September 25, 2024, will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on Tuesday, October 8, 2024, at 7:35 PM at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571, to hear all interested persons on the application received on the set date set forth below from the applicant set forth below for a hardship waiver of provisions of Local Law 1 of 2024 entitled "A Local Law Placing a Moratorium on Applications in the TNDCC Subdistrict on Applications for Subdivisions in the AB District and on Applications Affecting Wetlands Adopted March 27, 2024." The request for waiver concerns the following. Public hearing time, 7:35. Liam Turkle. Application date, September 6, 2024. Property, 307 Spring Lake Road, 62.4 acres. Please take further notice that copies of said proposed waiver applications are available for review at the Town Hall, 7340 Red Hook, New York, 73 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard in person or by directing comments in writing to the Town Board. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such case, please notify the town clerk in advance at the above address or by phone, so that arrangements can be made. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook dated September 25, 2024, Deanna Cochran, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Very good. Thank you very much, Deanna. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to open the continued public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anybody who would speak on this matter? Okay, hearing none. I would just reference some correspondence. I know that you all took this up at the last meeting when I was not here, just so you know, as part of further review. This application relates to something that would require a use variance. And a local law one, I believe, of this year, which is the moratorium law, does not provide for a waiver under these circumstances. And I think we spoke to Brandon on this matter, and he advised Mr. Turkle. Local law one, subsection A, the Town Board may waive the provisions of this moratorium upon the application of an owner of property upon which a use would have been a permitted use in the absence of this moratorium. And because what they're seeking to do is obtain a use variance, we can and we cannot at this time, you know, have this application proceed. Any questions about this? Okay, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we will not be denying the application because we will not be continuing the application. All right, let's back up for a moment and go through, gentlemen, the first meeting of each month. One of the things that we do initially is give a sort of a financial snapshot of where the town is beginning of the month. This is called the supervisor's report.
It's the most exciting thing you'll hear tonight.
Oh, I think they've heard a few exciting things around. Okay, so this is for the period ending September 30, 2024. I'll pull that up for the folks at home. We started out the beginning of the month with an opening balance of $7,997,000 and change. We had receipts of just over three quarters of a million. We dispersed $1,175,000. We ended with a balance of a little over $7.5 million. We've got some proposed budget adjustments by our bookkeeper. And of course, you get the monthly variance reports. Any questions?
I have a question.
Oh, well, no, it's not for you. Sorry. No, those questions, but you'll have an opportunity to ask the questions. Okay? Any questions, Town Board members?
No.
No.
Okay, well, let's get to the important people. All right, what's the question?
True.
Is there any way that we can access that?
Funny, you should mention it, because one of the things that we first did, actually, my first turn, was to put all this stuff on the website. And so this is all available. I'm actually accessing this through the town's website. It's already up there. New York State requires that these documents must be up on the town's website 24 hours in advance of a meeting, so that the public has an opportunity to review it and then come in the following day and make comments or, in your case, questions about it. So this is already on the website, and you can check. You can also go to one of the banners, I think it's called, or one of the, what's it called with the tabs? Tabs. It's not really a tab, though, but at the top there, there's something called Notify Me. So you can sign up. Be careful what you wish. You can sign up for notifications. Every time you have a meeting or every time something exciting happens, you can be notified by your email. Yeah, it could be 100 or 200 pages. Or by text of when something's happening. But there are practical applications. So if you are a family and you have your kid in summer camp, and a storm is brewing and we cancel camp early in the morning, you can get a text saying, "Summer camp is canceled due to weather forecast."
Or road is closed because a tree came down.
Or road is closed, or so on and so forth. So that's all part of trying to bring the government, which is why we have so few sometimes in the room, is because we're doing as much to bring it to where they are and what they can consume on an average basis. That's a long answer to a short question. Sorry.
That was very helpful.
Okay. Did we have a motion or a second to accept the supervisor's report?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Thank you, Christine. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We also have the clerk's report. Deanna, if you'd be kind enough to...
Town Clerk's Report for the period of September 1, 2024 to September 30, 2024. Total local shares remitted to the supervisor, $8,694.25. Total local shares amount paid to New York State Agriculture and Markets for the spay-neuter program, $44. Amount paid to New York State Department of Health for Marriage License, $135. Amount paid to New York State Environmental Conservation for Hunting and Fishing License, $3,048.25. Total state, county, and local revenues, $11,921.50.
Thank you very much, Deanna. That's a lot for fishing license. I know you had a lot of folks in there, a lot of people fishing.
Hunting.
Hunting and fishing.
Seasons start October.
This season, yeah?
Yeah, and the doe permits this past month.
Yeah, quail's month.
There's also...
You have an abstract?
Abstract, yeah. I hereby certify that vouchers numbered 32481 to 32609 processed in the month of September 2024 and accurate reporting of the abstracts approved for payment by the Town Board.
Very good. Is there a motion to accept the clerk's report?
Someone.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Let's quickly do announcements, and then we'll switch to our engineer to talk with us on a couple of issues. First announcement is it's that time of the year, or the time of, every four years, presidential election, early voting poll sites. For folks at home, you're probably getting used to this now, that we have, according to New York State election law and Dutchess County elections, we have early voting, and that is typically nine days of early voting prior to the election in early November. You can vote at any one of these sites. The closest one is the Pavilion at Brookmead, what we used to refer to as the Baptist Home. It's just off of Route 308. I think we did put a map in here somewhere. Here are the, yeah, here are the dates and the hours, and you'll notice that there are a couple of nights where it's open until 8:00 PM. Now, I don't normally try to nudge our constituents to do something that they may not be want to do, but I want to roll back the videotape, as Warner Wolf used to say. And we talked about this in 2022, about the importance of taking advantage of early voting. And many people did, but many people did not. And I understand that a lot of folks like to vote on Election Day. There's nothing like that energy to vote on Election Day. However, there were also folks who complained in 2022 that there was, during a certain period of time at the high school, a two-hour wait in order to vote. So just want to remind you that you have options, and that I don't believe that there was ever a time at any one of these early voting sites where there was a two-hour wait in order to vote. And not only think about you and the impact it may be on you, but others who may not have either the time or the physical stamina to stand in line for two hours, that the more that we can do to spread out, you know, the lines, I think, the better for everybody involved. So that's my preaching, and again, I apologize, but it will be helpful for those of you who want to avoid that two-hour wait. And last time, it was the high school. We'll see what it is this time. Okay, here's the map. This is right off of 308 as you're entering the Village of Rhinebeck. This is the closest location. Blow it up. That's all I can do. That, see that East Market Street? Can't see it on my cursor, but East Market Street. Okay. Next announcement, as we want to let you know, we had a very informal pop-up ribbon cutting late afternoon yesterday. The Cooking Ham Farm Trails are now open for the public for responsible use. We will be having these trails paroled, uh, paroled. Let's try that again. Did you see what you guys made me do? You made me say the word parole. Patrol. Patrol. Is that a Freudian slip? Maybe. Okay, patrol. Wonderful trails. You enter on Abrams Park. The path to nowhere is now a path to somewhere. You see what, please make sure you stay on the pathways. Make sure you use them responsibly. You're welcome to both walk and bike, non-motorized. So please enjoy the wonderful trails. About a mile and a half.
Please clean up after your dogs.
Please clean up after your dogs.
Leashed dogs.
Exactly. Every dog needs to be leashed while it's on the trails, and please don't leave any garbage. Okay, I don't think we have the announcement, but I just want to let you know some good news, which is that later this week, I'll be at the FDR Library accepting our grant award. As you know, we applied for design funds for the bridge to connect these Cooking Ham Farm Trails over to Rec Park over the Saw Hill. There'll be a pedestrian bridge constructed. These funds are just for the design. The bridge itself is quite expensive. We did apply for a park span for a 50-50 match on that and still waiting to hear. Okay, you probably have seen a lot of pink lights around the village and the town. I think most folks know what it's here, but here for is progress debt cancer awareness. And a lot of bulbs that have been supplied. We have two out front, and the village has many around town. We've got a couple of fundraising events happening. The American Legion is having one for the Carv, I can never pronounce it correctly.
Carvall.
Carvall. Carvall. Carver family. And Diego, we're wishing you all the best. Red Hook Fire Department has Trump or Terror. Both sound scary to me. Oktoberfest at the VFW, a 50-50 drawing. Halloween party at the Lodge. A trunk or treat for 27. Those you have your costume here?
Haven't decided.
No, nothing yet. Okay, I think that's all the announcements. Do I have anyone else? Okay, let's dig in, shall we? Brandy.
Are we opening the public hearing on Local Law B, or are we doing the consultation first?
Just to get to you.
Let's see, yeah, let's do the public hearing. I don't think we have any public on it, but let's go ahead and read the, read the public hearing notice, shall we?
Notice of continued public hearing, Local Law B, proposed of 2024, enacting a new chapter 110 entitled sewers. Please take notice that public hearing continued from Wednesday, September 25, 2024, will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on Tuesday, October 8, 2024, at 7:40 PM at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, to hear all interested persons on a proposed Local Law B proposed of 2024 entitled "A Local Law Enacting a New Chapter 110 Entitled Sewers." The proposed Local Law enacts the chapter 110 of the Town Code to provide for efficient, economic, environmentally safe, and legal operation of the Town of Red Hook Sewer District Number One Sewer District Collection System to comply with applicable requirements of the intermunicipal agreement with the Village of Red Hook for discharge to the Village's treatment plant and to enact regulations regarding wastewater disposal to protect the health and safety of the Town of Red Hook. Please take further notice that copies of said proposed Local Law are available for review at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard in person or by directing comments in writing to the Town Board. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such a case, please notify the town clerk in advance at the above address, so that arrangements can be made. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook dated September 25, 2024, Deanna Cochran, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Very good. Thank you, Deanna. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we open the public hearing, or continue the public hearing, I should say.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. So at last we left on this topic, we were awaiting comments back from the Village of Red Hook, because obviously this is an extension. We are going to be utilizing their sewer plant, and so we wanted to make sure that their sewer district law and ours were compatible. They're making changes to theirs. We're going to obviously try to be consistent with that. We've gotten the comments, only very recently. Our engineer and our attorney have been working hard on this, and we have some suggestions for changes. And then with the idea that we would continue the public hearing with those changes, recognizing that ultimately, as the village continues to work on their, you know, because their, this system is fairly new to them, and so they're learning more and more, and they're wanting to fine tune their law. They expect that in the future, they're going to have changes as well. We're going to probably come back to this six months, nine months, I can't tell you when, and have some more changes, but at least we'll have something in place for right now, provided we can get to that point in time. So Brandy, did you maybe want to, I know we have Chris on the line here as well, did you maybe want to walk us through some of the proposed changes, but after you sort of described what the purpose of the sewer district law is, and perhaps more for the public than for the folks?
If you're being recorded?
Please, yeah, is it on? You don't know if it's on? It's on, thank you.
Is it on? Okay, great. Okay, good evening, everyone. So for the record, I'm Brandy Nelson. I am an engineer with tie-in bond, and we are working with the town as you are moving along the path to construct a sewer in the TND. The first step everyone was involved in was the actual formation of the district. This next step, in terms of this proposed Local Law, and both Cassie and Chris Shaw are the town's attorneys and have been working with us, these are, this is the local law that will be added to the town's code that will provide the regulations associated with construction, operation, maintenance, et cetera, of the sewer district. So it's derived primarily from a template that the state makes available, so there's some consistency across the state. And then this has been customized to, as the supervisor said, align with the village's local law as well, to the extent that it can. We have some obvious differences. They've actually got a plant and a little bit different municipal structure. So just high level, you know, Article One is the title and purpose. Article Two are the definitions. We've been working with the village, the village's engineer, to just make sure our definitions are aligned. Article Three is about the use of public sewers in the sewer district. So if you're in the district, you use the sewers. And then Article Four is with regard to private wastewater disposal. Article Five is about sewer extension and what needs to be done to extend the sewer collection system. Article Six has to do with the specifics of the construction of individual connections as it relates to building laterals, and this is everything from the actual materials that are used, to the various testing, to where connections can occur, and things like where does the property owner's responsibilities end and the municipalities or the district's responsibilities begin? And we've been working closely with the village, as the supervisor said, based on their experience to align the two, the two laws. Article Seven is about inflow, which is non-wastewater flow that can get into systems. That's something that's really undesirable, and we've got some good feedback today from the village engineer about language they want based on some experience they've been having. Article Nine is with regard to restrictions on discharge. This sewer is limited in the types of waste it can receive, and so, for instance, restaurants are going to need to have grease traps so that we're not sending certain pollutants down into the sewer system and fouling the actual treatment plant. Article Ten is with regard to discharge permits and pre-treatment requirements. This is specifically related to non-domestic residential uses. These might be uses, and this may be a point we want to discuss at some point. I don't know when you'd like to have that discussion, but...
You can bring it up now?
I can interject now. So what we did was we took a look, initially, the village didn't want us to include anything pertaining to industrial users. And starting with the EPA's regulations around wastewater treatment, there are two classes of industrial users. There are those that are considered significant industrial users that are producing a kind of wastewater that has characteristics that are far different from your normal municipal domestic sewage and may include contaminants that are very unfavorable to the operation of your sewer plant. A significant industrial user is creating that uncharacteristic waste in a large percentage as compared to your underlying base flow, and so it can upset the chemistry of your wastewater pretty dramatically. We're in agreement with the village that we neither anticipate those kind of users in the district, nor are they desirable. So we are working with the village to strike the significant industrial user language. One point we are discussing with the village, though, pertains to whether or not we leave in some language around industrial users. So go ahead, Bill.
What about, say, an automotive repair shop?
That's an excellent point.
Semi-industrial?
Yes, exactly. The classification of the wastewater that might be discharged from that location could have industrial characteristics and components that are also not conventional to your regular sanitary wastewater flow. Sorry, does that make sense? That's like, okay. But one thing we also don't want to preclude is if the sewer district is ever servicing the OI portion of the TND, the office industrial, the zoning does currently have provisions that allow for light industrial uses, medical office buildings, value-added agricultural products, so food processing. I think the example I used was like a pickle packing plants or, you know, a jam-making facilities. You might create a wastewater that has different characteristics, and we may still want the option to provide for pre-treatment of that wastewater that the property owner would have to undertake before they discharge into the sewer system. So that's, that's a lot of words. It's kind of a complicated thing. It's maybe a future thing, but we just don't want to recommend that you foreclose on that, particularly given the zoning associated with the OI. And then... And then Article Eleven is about enforcement and penalties. So how will this regulation be enforced or this local law be enforced? Yeah, this is probably where Cassie or Chris can speak more clearly than I can about all the remedies one may have in terms of enforcement. This is for things like actually hooking up to the sewer, paying your bills, keeping your system compliant, but providing access to the operator if they need to access the property. And then Article, let me see, Article Twelve is about fees. So the charges associated with the operation maintenance and hookups associated with the sewer. Article Thirteen is about public disclosures. And Article Fourteen is not something I'm as familiar with as a lawyer term, conflict severability and effective date. And then the last item, attachment one, is the technical specifications that will go along with this law to provide design guidance for connection. And it will involve the specifications for the materials that will be used for the construction of individual connections, the testing of those materials, and the roles and responsibilities of the installer and the tester.
Okay. I think you covered one of the biggest changes to the draft that we've had for quite some time now. Is there any other questions about the changes? I'll scroll through quickly with our black line and blue line.
I have one question on the significant industrial users part. So in the table of contents, it's slightly different language from what's in the draft later. So in the table of contents, it says no district permits authorized for significant industrial users. And then later it says wastewater discharge permits prohibited for significant industrial users. I'm wondering whether there's a differentiation, distinction between those two things or if it's.
I'm going to defer to one of the attorneys on that question. I will say that this red line that we're, blue line that we're looking at right now, we finished at about four o'clock today and we haven't done a full realignment of all the language. So there are some additional edits that need to be.
Yeah. I just wasn't sure if there was like a, I don't think it's a substantial difference, but like I just noticed it was like that. So a prohibition versus no authorization. Prohibition feels a little bit stronger to me in terms of saying like, we're never going to do this versus like no authorization.
So for significant industrial users, the intention is that both there are going to be no permits for those users and that type of use is not permitted. Okay?
So both.
And we don't anticipate that that would affect any current operations in the district?
That's correct.
I was curious a little bit, I don't know if, and maybe the village would need to speak to this, but the, whatever it's called, it's the inflow that is non-wastewater. What kind of lessons have they been learning about that? What are the concerns?
So a couple of the examples the village's engineer relayed to us had to do with the placement of various elements of the onsite portion. So if you remember, septic tanks are going to be replaced with new septic tanks and pump chambers. And then those pump chambers will have a small force main that will connect to a larger force main. And the tanks in that system have lids and some of the lids have either not been watertight and so they're allowing rainwater to infiltrate in or have been situated physically on the land in a low-lying area and have just had ponding water on them. And so they've seen a little bit of inflow from that sort of thing or have been like in the path of a downspout, you know? So that's primarily what they're concerned with is stormwater, rainwater getting in.
Does that affect the chemistry in the same way as the industrial? Like, does it throw off what you're expecting coming in or is that the main issue there?
The main issue is the volume of water and how essentially clean rainwater is having to go through a treatment plant. And so they were saying that they are, a brand-new force main system should not correlate to rainfall at all. And yet they are seeing correlations in flow into their system related to rainfall. So they know they've got some sort of problem. And so what it also does, it eats up capacity that they were hoping could be allocated to other users in their system. It's the nemesis of sewer plants everywhere. You don't want rainwater in your centers.
Well, and that may help explain why there was very little capacity left over. But I don't think it's been an enormous number and I don't think he reports.
He hasn't given me any numbers. He just said they've seen peaks associated with rainfall.
Yeah. Good question. Okay, other particulars?
I did have this question regarding this section right here.
Yes.
So we did a table of contents and above it said, we're not going to accept wastewater. We intentionally omitted the authority to take wastewater from outside the district. But I read this and it seemed to suggest that the operator could at their discretion. So I'm just curious.
So what happened is that we took out one provision because we had two different provisions that were essentially discussing the same thing. So we took out one of the provisions and we modified the other one to make it clear that both the town and the village would have to approve the addition of outside waste.
And my question to that, my follow-up question was, if we were going to make that decision, what would be the reason we would want to accept waste that's from a non-participating customer of the system?
What this can give the town the flexibility to do, recognizing that the TND sewer district is limited geographically, is if you had a user in one of the areas not already included that is adjacent to, and they came with a development proposal, you could consider that application on as individual merits.
So moving right along.
Seven, yeah, Article Seven was inflow. That's where there were a number of changes. And then Article Ten under. We did add a provision, I guess I should mention in Article Nine under prohibition, so discharge restrictions. Good comment from the village's engineer about prohibiting the disposal of quote-unquote flushable wipes. Flushable wipes are not flushable. Flush them, please. They're not flushable. They clog pumps at an alarming rate.
Are there mains for the clogs? Would they be?
Oh, well, I mean, we hear them called like rag balls and they're disgusting if you ever want, you know, wastewater engineers love to take pictures of them and show how terrible they are.
Article Ten.
Article Ten.
Cover there.
Article Ten, I mean, the portions that we struck so far are particularly related to the large industrial, significant industrial users. So those portions are being struck.
Not sure if we have any other.
I don't think there were. There are in attachment one, but we're actually waiting for the village to send us their specifications. We just said, we'll match whatever you want. There's no sense in us reinventing the wheel there.
This has been helpful. We need to move this along. Folks, are we willing to set or continue or adjourn the public hearing as modified with this draft for our next meeting, which would then be the 23rd, if I'm not mistaken, at 7:35?
And do we anticipate being able to take action at that time or?
I would hope so, yes. We just need to make sure we get it posted in time. And then we could entertain taking action, again with the caveat that it's quite likely the village is going to ask us to come back at some point in time next year and say, we've got a couple of tweets, would you mind making these changes?
Yeah, I think that we continue the public hearing.
Thank you, Chris. I'll second. Thank you, Logan.
Robert, did you actually, before you vote on that, did you actually ask the public for any comments? Because I know you were receiving comments from your board and discussing the nature of your.
I think I did, but why don't I go ahead and do that? Are there any other comments from the public, gentlemen? So you probably want to know, since you don't have any comments, I'll ask the question for you. Why does it matter to you, right? Why does it matter to your lives that we're considering these things? So I'll give you two quick answers. The reason that we're setting up, and we're going to discuss water districts as well in commercial districts, relatively mostly commercial districts up and down Route Nine. You should know that the village recently, within the last two years, created a sewer district. We're looking to extend that down to past town. Why does it matter to you? Because we can, if property owners don't have to figure out where the well is going and how they're getting clean water or where their wastewater is going, they can utilize a lot more of their property for more stores, more restaurants, more businesses, more residential, so that we can create more of a downtown. And therefore, perhaps a little more dynamic community for especially folks of your age and then younger people, that there's a lot more going on in the community. And that's the idea, centers in green space, a better downtown, a better green space. So that's what's in it for you, hopefully. Do you have a question? Time's up.
Regarding the, one of the articles, or not like a specific article, but I kept seeing lateral, like a lateral sewer top up. I know it's like sad, but I don't, what does that mean in terms of like sewage?
Okay. So Brandy, you want to take that on? You want to pretend we're playing charades?
Yeah. A sewer lateral is the pipe that leaves a building that carries the sewage. And in this case, if you have a house with a septic system, that sewage goes into a septic tank and the solid portion stays in the tank and the liquid portion goes out into a leach field in your yard. What the town is proposing to do is put in a sewer collection system that will make the leach field unnecessary. And so still a building lateral will connect from the building into the septic tank. The solids will still stay in the tank. The liquid portion will be pumped into a collection system and go to the village's sewer plant.
Why is the term called lateral? I think is one of the.
Why is it called lateral? That's a good question. I don't know. I looked at the state regulations.
It was just the main top, right?
There's mains.
The mains. The main pipe.
Yeah.
Well, I would add one additional reason beyond the economic development, which is that our aquifer that we all drink out of also sits in this area. And so if you have uncontrolled wastewater going from private systems into the ground, there's high potential for that to end up in the groundwater in places where you don't want it.
Yeah, whether your water comes from our water district or a well, it all still comes from that aquifer and you want to keep it clean. And we have some of the best water around. So, you know, pumping and treating that sewage is an important thing to keeping your water clean.
Here's your quick history lesson for today, which still means you have to take it in school, is that when settlers came to this area, they settled where water was readily available and shallow. And so that resource, which was a positive, is also, as Julia pointed out, now vulnerable because just a few feet below where you sit is where the aquifer is. So it is something that we need to protect because we all need clean drinking water. So. Any other question? You're doing well, gentlemen. Keep up the good work.
So we didn't vote yet?
A vote to continue. We have a motion, a second. Is that right?
We're good.
What?
Aye.
Oh, aye. 7:35?
Yes.
October 23rd. During the public hearing. Until such time, as with the local law proposed B. Potentially with some action and we'll forward the changes. I know the village engineer has that, but let's do that pronto. We'll get it posted pronto to the paper so we meet our deadline.
I think I sent it to you tonight sometime.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think.
The announcement? Brandy, what are you sending me?
No, no, the newest.
Oh, yes, thank you.
The clean version.
Thank you.
It needs to be revised.
Yeah.
So.
I'll do that tonight, too.
Brandy, let's, why don't we switch right over to water districts? I know that's not the next item on the agenda, but I think since we have you here and you have a rather lengthy drive back, I need to jump back to.
That's the page where you will find on our website all these documents.
Agenda meeting. Or not?
The map is way behind.
Is it very last?
It's the very last.
It's the last thing I sent it being.
Don't look at the screen, you'll get this. We'll get that. So straight to the top, so I can just jump to the last.
That's the old one.
That's the old one? Do we have the number?
I have, oh, there it is.
There it is. Okay. So very simply, where are we now? What's happened in the last 50 or 60 years and where do we need to get to?
So in terms of water, there are portions of the Town of Red Hook that are served public water by the Village of Red Hook. And in the map that is on the screen, the portions of the town that are served by village water are represented in the light blue color. And as part of the sewer district work that we're doing now, I'll let the supervisor speak to his discussions with the mayor, but one of the items we are looking to move forward with is to create non-county district-related water district for the portions of the town that are served by village water. So currently, the area in the town that is served by village water that is controlled, regulated, owned, and operated by Dutch County Water and Wastewater is the Tradition Development. So that would not be included. But south of the village along the Route Nine corridor, we want to create a Coincident Water District with the Sewer District. And then we want to discuss whether or not it makes sense to also create districts for the other areas outside of, outside of the village. So as you all know, the town already has Water District Number One serving areas north of town. And there is an interconnection between the town and the village just for redundancy and reliability. And so this would be creating a new, one or more districts. We haven't figured that piece out yet, so that's something we want to look at so that we've got corresponding water-related regulations in that TND corridor in particular, but then also addressing the other outlying areas that have been served. One thing is we're not entirely sure how the agreements or what agreements are in place between the users in some of the areas outside of, outside of the village. Villages are required to serve all the parcels in their village. They don't have to form districts. And villages sometimes serve water to locations outside, usually on a one-by-one basis. Or when a development goes in, they might form an agreement with a developer to expand their water service area to include a new development outside and then treat that user as an out-of-district user, usually a separate rate structure, et cetera. So I want to know, Robert, if you wanted to speak about what you and the mayor have discussed in terms of how to proceed. But the process for district formation would be much similar to what we've been doing for sewer, where we would do an engineering analysis. We want to understand kind of the existing condition of those water mains, number of users, how much water they're consuming, the agreements that are in place already, whether or not the village's water service area permit accounts for all of these out-of-district users. So there's some investigation that we need to do. And then we would make a recommendation on number of districts, district or districts to form and then move forward with a map plan and. and report for one or more districts for water.
Very good. Can I ask just a clarifying question? Because the nature of the existing out-of-village parcels is pretty scattered. Like, is it best practice to have geographically consolidated districts? Or could you have sort of a floating district that captured a number of pre-existing scattered users? Or how would you handle that?
I think there's a number of ways to respond to that, and it depends. You know, I think more often, what we're looking for is sort of uniformity in the service area. So, for instance, is, you know, age of pipe, and trying to understand, you know, if you've got an area that's been served for seventy-five years, the age of the pipe is one thing, but if you have a new development, like Traditions has just gone in, and all pipes are brand-new, that's another thing. We wouldn't necessarily want to lump those together in a single district. Geography can play a role. In a case where we've got kind of a wide scattering, I don't think we would do individual districts for, you know, north, south, east, and west, just because administratively it might be burdensome. But I think that needs a little further evaluation.
We have essentially three areas. Sorry, I interrupted you, Bill. We have essentially three areas. One is the TND, and we know, obviously, we need to create at least a water district there to complement the sewer district, or else we're not going to be able to realize the potential. We have this area here, Glen Ridge, built in the early 2000s, I'd say, right, Christine? That's about right. And then we have Willow Park over here on East 199. And I ventured to guess, if I recall, sixties, seventies, that kind of era. So we have existing infrastructure, as Brandy referenced, in different eras. You know, we'll probably need to look at these as potential separate districts, but, you know, until we have all the information about what's on the ground, I don't think we can necessarily. But that said, it could take quite some time to really get a handle on, for example, Willow Park, and, you know, what the nature of that existing infrastructure is. So, you know, I might suggest that we do sort of a two-pronged approach, which is, we ask for more information until we're satisfied with the kind of information for all of those out-of-service area properties, at the same time that we ask our engineer to come up with a task order and an estimate for perhaps a creation of a single additional water district for the TND, so we at least know what's involved with that, not necessarily to act on it at our next meeting, if we're not ready to do that, but just so we have some idea of what, you know, and maybe like an estimate of timeframe and so on and so forth, and what that means as it relates to grant opportunities and cycles. Because I think we don't want sewer too far ahead of water.
Right. If you would like them to run pretty much consistent with one another, absolutely.
Right. Does that make sense?
I'm so. Are there also areas where there, I mean, I know this is not always easy to predict, but where there is additional development anticipated, that it would make sense to address proactively?
That is something that we'll look at. And if you recall, when we put together the preliminary engineering report for the sewer district, we did take a look specifically at parcels within the proposed sewer district that are already served by water, and we were able to get valuable data on actual water usage from the village's data for those locations. But we do want to do a little sort of, you know, probably high-level zoning assessment, a build-out of some of the larger undeveloped or underdeveloped parcels, and make some predictions on what additional demand there might be. And that's typically something you would do in a preliminary engineering report. So that would be included in our scope.
So, I have a question. I understand that those areas in light blue are currently being serviced.
Yes.
I'm interested in knowing what the village's capacity is to be able, considering the amount of development that had to go on below, you know, especially even just TND residential on the east side that's undeveloped. I think it was on for two hundred living units. And then, you know, across from the Hanaford Hotel. I wonder whether or not, excuse me, that's a strain on the village, and whether or not it would be prudent to do what we did with Water District Number One on our own, and if that's a feasible thing to do.
That's a really good point. The format of the preliminary engineering report includes an alternative assessment, and so that would be one approach we might take. And we will be building off of some work that the village has done fairly recently to assess capacity of their own system in terms of both water supply well pumping capacity, but also really important storage capacity. And you need to have both to really be a good server. The town has also, I think, Bill, you've been involved in the Drinking Water Source Protection Plan. The state is working on that, and I think they emailed us last week and said that'll be available soon.
Any minute, right?
Soon. I don't know what soon is.
It's been going on for six months.
But there's some good data in there also.
But there's no reason we can't go straight to that.
There's not, yeah.
On this water district.
Particularly for the district that's aligned with the TND. We've done a little bit of that, like, work already. The piece we really need to dig into is getting into the village's archives to find out when they provided service and what the terms of that service were. And that's kind of like a deep dive into the paper vault of their basement.
Proceeding. Okay. So shall we proceed on those, the parallel, not lateral, parallel ones? Okay. Very good. So, Brandy.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Got you out of here on a reasonable hour.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Stay the night.
I'll be in touch. Yes, I'll be in touch.
So, let's, the theme tonight seems to be water, water, right? We're going to approve a ward, an inspection for the standpipe. We actually have only one bid on this one.
Yeah, we only got one bid.
And I believe, Robert, you may want to review for the board. I think that the Water Department sent you all of the solicitations that they submitted.
Yes.
From that perspective.
Yes, there was a long.
The record?
Yeah, for the record, there were several entities that they emailed our fee to. And here is the proposal. The winning bid would be eight thousand two hundred and fifty to Aquacious Infrastructure Management. Actually, of the Aquanish out of Massachusetts.
Well, our audience might be interested in this, actually.
Yeah, I wouldn't bet on it.
Well, you know where the water tank is off the well back? It's a big, it's not the village's water tank, it's the town's water tank. It's old. And the only way you know if it needs to be replaced as a refurbishment is somebody, a scuba diver basically goes inside the tank and inspects all the walls to see if there's corrosion or rust or anything going on, or repairs that have to be done. Because either option, which is a refurbishing or a replacement, are very expensive. Replacement, really expensive. So what these firms do is they send people inside the tanks, and they, yeah, there's a scuba diver right there. And they take movies and get a good idea of what the condition of the inside of the steel is.
So it's probably not a job profession you had thought about.
As well.
Okay, I think we have a resolution, which would be ninety-three, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
Do we have the resolution? Okay. Thank you. Ninety-three, authorizing a contract award for the inspection of water storage standpipe and sediment removal, whereas the town has a need for an inspection. As Bill just described, the town solicited proposals pursuant to a written request for several contractors, as detailed by the Water Department. After review of the response, and review by engineers for the reasonableness, the town is in a position to award to Aquacious Infrastructure Management a cost of eight thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars as set forth in the RFP. And would the liaison to the Water Board like to move this one?
Remove.
Who would like to second this one?
Second.
Thank you, Christine. Any further discussion? Get your scuba on, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Okay. With a very good golfer in the room, may we consider authorizing the waiver of a thirty-day notice for a liquor license at the Red Hook Golf Club and the Grove. This is a continuation of activities that are already being conducted and have been for many years. Even though I don't drink, I can attest to the fact that beer has been offered, of course, for those who play as poorly as I do. What do we think? So, wouldn't we move to waive the thirty-day requirement? I agree. This would be resolution number ninety-four. Christine moves to waive the thirty-day notice. I would second that. Is there further discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Moving right along. I think that's all we have. Oh, the Pop Plan, the RFP, yeah, let's do that. Let's go to that one. We've got to get these young men out of here. It's past their turn. All right. So, with many thanks to Julia and our attorneys to the town for their work on a draft RFP, which we will not only be reviewing with DOS tomorrow, we will start the review. But also, any thoughts from you all on this agreement? Christine, you have a lot of experience with planning. How best to approach public projects like this? Any thoughts, any concerns, things we should change that you noticed? We're not going to adopt this, so don't feel pressure. We're not going to adopt it, because DOS is going to get back to us. But is there anything that stood out that we better tackle than correct?
Well, I mean, the heart, no. Many difficult parts.
Did I ask?
But public participation is key to anything like this, because you can do a wonderful process and put a great document together. And if you either don't get input, and then you get to the end of the public hearing, and you get a lot of discussion and perhaps complaints about the fact that the public was not included, then, you know, it can derail the project. Of course, the flip side of that is actually getting people out to become involved. And I've read quite a few articles about the process used in Brianbeck. And, you know, it seemed to really resonate with people and get a lot of involvement. So I think that's something we should look at and see if we can replicate it here. We're not, you know, we're not being specific in here about that that's what we want, but I think we could potentially provide that as an example of something that we think would be a good process as a starting point.
Right, I think we want that diversity of proposals as it relates to process to see how, not only, you know, the consultants maybe did that, but other consultants, how they might approach the public engagement piece, right?
Yeah, I completely agree with you, and I think, well, a couple things. We added some language kind of in the upfront, you know, almost like executive summary part of the RFP, saying we really, the public participation is important. We've included that in the evaluation criteria for the proposals that we receive. There's some sort of preliminary stipulations from Department of State about, you know, you will hold X number of public sessions, and that's fine. But what we want to hear from the experts, the planners, what they think the most effective way of engaging the public will be. And we can obviously modify that with plan with DOS based on, you know, the sort of professional guidance that we get. We also included in there, I forget exactly which section of the RFP it is, but I think in addition to the sort of broad public engagement, I think tapping into the existing networks of expertise is really important. So we're requiring that the consultants will coordinate with. And then we listed like a whole bunch of committees and existing community groups, so that we're not reinventing the wheel, and we know we're talking to the people who've been thinking about these topics for a long time.
You know, different ways of reaching subgroups, as we want to call it, or, you know, certain interest groups, whether it be defined by geography or economics or, you know, commuting distance, et cetera. You know, sometimes, you know, we tend to have a regular meeting schedule, so we have meetings along that schedule. There are people that doesn't work for, so you have to have weekends, you have to try different times of day, different types of things. You know, it's not all just, you know, us up here talking to have the audience. You need to have involvement. So, you know, the key is to, you know, you don't need to have every person at every single step of the process, but you need to have the voices of the folks who would be impacted at the appropriate times of the process. Because, you know, this, a comprehensive plan is a vision document. So it's, it's one thing to talk big picture and to get folks, because we're often very involved in the day-to-day of life, or, and having served on the planning board for, you know, twenty-something years, you know, it's really important for folks, you know, where a shed can go on their property, for whatever reasons. The use of the rest of the property, for views, for plants that are there, for access, for their neighbors. So when you're talking about something very specific about that, you're talking about the zoning, which is the implementation tool for the vision document. And if you don't have good buy-in and support for the vision document, it just can't.
Makes it the next step.
Just be so much more difficult when you're trying to make zoning updates to implement.
Well, and, yeah, that's a really good point, and I would actually maybe highlight the flip side of that as well, which is that I have heard, you know, we've been talking about the comprehensive plan update for a while now. You know, we've waited to get the grant, and we've been waiting for the contract from Department of State. There's a little bit of a sense, I think, that the update to the comprehensive plan is sort of the solution and answer to everything.
Right.
And it's the start of that process, right? It is a visionary document, it's going to be a kind of a high-level, principal level, and any updates to zoning would follow after that process. And so people just need to understand which is which.
To get everybody out of the weeds, up to clouds. And then the next step is to bring it back down to the weeds.
Right.
So you need to have the understanding of the big-picture part.
Plus, the last time we did it was thirty years ago?
Yep, so the current plan is from nineteen ninety-three. It's been amended and revised.
Sort of.
Well, I mean, we have, I mean, Senator Green's base was.
It was a thing.
Right. We didn't follow the same procedures. It's not technically called a comprehensive plan, but it was a visioning process.
And that was twenty-eleven, is that right?
Well, actually, it adopted in twenty-eleven. It started in two thousand and four, so.
Hopefully, this one will not take that long. But you never know.
Julia's promised to get it all done in twelve months.
Starting when? It's twelve months from what day?
Twenty years ago, right?
Did you all see, it reminds me, did you all see that, I'll call it policy document, whatever, that EDC shared about economic development? How economic development is not your grandmother or grandfather's economic development. It's not just about, right? You read that? I was heartened by that. Yeah, I think I circulated it by email. Yeah, I think I circulated it by email. I was heartened to read that because it had a lot of what we've been doing for all these years. It was all about quality of life in the community, so on and so forth. So it was... It's nice to be reassured as you go into... But yeah, as we've identified, if we're on the right track, not to use a political term, it's always good to review, always good to take a look at it. If what's working, it's working, you know, we'll hear that, and then we can update. So I'm excited to see you already have a short list, right, of folks that you think we should be distributing, and then obviously, there'll be many others that we don't know about.
The RFP will go out widely, and we hope to have a very... Get a pool of gifts.
Right, right, right.
Good response.
Good response to it. I'm wondering, you know, it seems premature to take action on this this evening. What do you think, Chris? Do you think we could do that pursuant to DOS not making substantive changes? What do you think?
You know, it's an RFP, so I think that...
We could just do it, right?
Authorize, you know, Julia to proceed to release the RFP when, you know, subject to the DOS's approval, yes.
Yes, because that could be a while. I mean, you know, I know the state has been expanding their offerings, but the staffing doesn't necessarily correspond to a lot of the great programs they have up there. Are we all comfortable with that? I'd like to...
Yeah.
Okay, very good. So why don't we do that by motion to authorize counsel person Solomon to proceed with the RFP after...
Subject to DOS.
Subject, yeah, subject to the DOS approval, but after collaborating with DOS on this matter. And I so move.
Second.
Is there a second? Julia's going to vote.
Second.
Am I allowed to vote to authorize myself?
Yeah.
Probably through...
We'll see, we'll see, we'll see what...
What DOS wants.
I never want to predict what another state agency, what they're evaluating, because that's a fool's errand.
Right. I mean, we may need to modify the schedule, obviously, but we'll have to be guided by when we get the green light from DOS since we're relying on their funds.
Correct. And we were, you know, when we were looking at the dates originally, we were trying to work around the holidays as we get toward the end of year.
Okay, very good. Before we enter...
Are we going to vote?
Did we finish voting?
I thought we all did, but I swear I heard all but Julia say, "All right, no, let's do it again." All right. Okay. Before we entertain a motion to go into executive session, discuss a real estate matter, the public disclosure of which could substantially affect price, are there any public comments before we do so? Okay. Well, you didn't have this on your bingo card, so the five of you, I'd like you to tell us a little bit about just your names, who you are, where you go to school, what grade you're in, any interests that we should know about you. That's it. Keep it simple, short, sweet. Go ahead, why don't we start with you?
My name is Patrick Edman. I go to Pine Plains. I'm a senior, and, I don't know.
Any plans or interests at the school?
I don't really... I don't plan on going to college, I kind of just want to go into the workforce.
Okay.
Because college debt is not fun.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
My name is Christian Cenarius. I go to Pine Plains High School. I'm a senior, and I like to play golf in my free time.
But you have a lot of... Cause you're a senior. As a junior, you're in. Next?
I'm Brody Rathkin. I also go to Pine Plains, and I also am a senior.
Very good.
And I plan on going into neuroscience or like biochem in college.
Very, very nice. I have a few customers lined up for you.
My name is Tru Wykov. I also go to Pine Plains, and I'm also a senior, and I plan to go to college for automotive engineering.
Right. Obviously, you'll focus on electric vehicles, right? Because otherwise, you won't have much of a future.
My name is Joey DeCarlo. I also go to Pine Plains, and I'm also a senior, and I plan on majoring in music business.
Music business, very nice. So I think you're probably 25% of the student population at Pine Plains at this point, right?
Is it like 30?
Right? Yeah. It's pretty small, isn't it?
Yeah. Our graduating class is like 70.
Yeah, we graduated 71.
Yeah, interesting.
But three of us live in Red Hook, I think. Is your address Red Hook?
Yeah.
Yeah, so three of us live in Red Hook.
I recognize a few names, yeah. I'll see which ones in the back row that I recognize.
Oh, back row? That's a...
Well, anyway, thank you very much for coming. I know that I have obligation to sign off, but I hope you, it wasn't as painful as you thought it was going to be when you came in today. I will also put the bug in your ear that, you know, you may have noticed, we're not spring chickens up here. So that means ultimately, someday, somebody's going to have to sit up here besides us. And so, you know, while you're trying to figure out your lives, don't necessarily rule out local government. You might find it's a great way to utilize your skills and your creativity. So with that being said, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
And at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we go into the executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And for the folks at home, good night. Thanks very much for joining us. Stay healthy, be happy.